Thank you. Okay, so the exciting stuff. This evening at our Board of Selectmen meeting, we have the swearing in of a new firefighter, Michael Fornier. Great, that's good. So, we're gonna start with Town Clerk, Annie Iantelli, is gonna do the swearing in. You gentlemen wanna come inside here? Where do we get some people out there?
Put your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye, Michael Fornier.
Do solemnly swear and affirm
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform all my duties incumbent upon me
Perform all my duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As firefighter for the town of West Bridgewater
As firefighter for the town of West Bridgewater.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States of America
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts
And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the town of West Bridgewater
And the town of West Bridgewater.
To the best in my knowledge and ability
To the best in my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. We're gonna take a recess for a minute for pictures. Yeah, yeah, that'd be good, right?
Motion to recess for five minutes?
Seconded. All those in favor?
Anybody wants to take any pictures?
Yeah, do you wanna do some pictures for the Board of Selectmen meeting of Wednesday, December 16th? So, in my haste, 'cause I was so excited about swearing in a new firefighter, I failed to mention that Selectmen Lawrence is on his way. He's gonna be a little late, so we're gonna start without him. Okay, next on the agenda is School Superintendent Dr. Patricia Oakley. School Resource Officer Presentation. And we also have a Spring Street School Roof Presentation. So, we're gonna start with the School Resource Officer Proposal, and it looks like
Yeah, we're gonna have
Mr. Bodwell's gonna help you with that?
And this proposal came out of the meeting that we had with Mr. Bodwell, who is the Chair of our District Wide Safe Schools Committee, and myself, and Chief Clerk, and Lieutenant Flaherty. So, without further ado, we're gonna have Mr. Bodwell do a little presentation on
Oh, great.
And a lot of this, most of this, comes from the School Safety Committee.
Good, thank you, Mr. Bodwell.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm very excited to propose this to the Selectmen's Office. I wanna start by, you know, obviously stating our mission statement. In our mission statement, obviously, a safe environment is key to help us acquire the knowledge, skills, and values needed for our students to have a successful career here at school in a diverse and global society in the 21st century. And I have to say that we are so fortunate in West Bridgewater to have such a wonderful working relationship with our police and fire department. In talking to other communities, we are, they are not all so lucky as we are. So, we have an unbelievable working relationship with them, which I think is key to this proposal, but also key to the success of our students and the safety of all. Last year, Mass. General Law was modified a bit to put in information about a School Resource Officer being put into place into districts that did not have them, of course, subject to appropriation. When we looked around at what communities did not have School Resource Officers, there was just West Bridgewater and Avon at this point.
So, can you back up for a minute there?
Sure.
So, this is a new law that just went into effect, or act that went into effect last year?
Yeah.
Wow.
So, it's something we've been talking about in our Safe Schools Committee for a while with all the participants of what would, you know, what are some of the next steps in our district to, you know, make sure our kids are, maintain the safety that they currently have. And listed there are the other towns and communities that currently do have a School Resource Officer. And what I also have in front of you is a map that shows you different communities in southeastern Massachusetts. Again, the green noting the school, the districts that have a Resource Officer. Blue, Abington and Holbrook are planned for the future. Abington will start one next year, and Holbrook at the completion of their building project. And then Avon and West Bridgewater are the two that currently do not have a School Resource Officer. School violence is in the news since December 2012. Since Sandy Hook, there have been 142 school shootings. More recently, in this past year, we've had 45 school shootings. But this goes beyond the scope of just school shootings and school violence in that manner. It really goes to other things that are more day-to-day issues that our kids face, such as bullying and harassment. ABC News reports that 30% of students are either bullies or victims of bullies. They also report that 160,000 kids stay home from school each day in America because of issues related to bullying and harassment. And victims of bullying are two to nine times more likely to consider suicide. So, there are a lot of other things that really go into the safety of all of our kids. This proposal is something that we've talked about, like I said, for quite a while. We've talked about it with school committee members, the police department, our administrative team, as well as our Safe Schools Committee, which is made up of a variety of different people. And we meet every four to six weeks to talk about school safety-related issues. In West Bridgewater, the SRO would look, wouldn't be this. It wouldn't be just that security guard at the front door. There's a lot more that goes into it. Again, we feel we have a fairly safe community. We feel we have a wonderful police department. So, it's more than just, you know, having someone there guarding the gate for our students. The vision is for them to interact daily, hourly, with our kids, and with our staff, and with our community. So, that's what we see. We see us as a very fluid type of person that would be in and out of all the different buildings within the district. The goals of the National Association of School Resource Officers, the West Bridgewater Public Schools, and our police department, provide a safe learning environment in our schools, provide valuable resources to our school staff, provide them with continued education, positive relationships with our students, and develop strategies to resolve problems so every child can reach their full potential. So, again, working with the whole child. So, what does that look like? And, you know, what would that look like in West Bridgewater if it's someone, it's certainly beyond just someone looking at security cameras? There's a lot of things that we feel would be part of the responsibilities in the job description of our School Resource Officer. We feel they would have office hours in each of the buildings in the district. Dedicated hours that they would be in and out of the schools, meeting with kids, meeting with teachers. People could make appointments, so they would go in and see if they had questions or concerns or issues they wanted to raise. Currently, we have a West Bridgewater Police Officer who teaches a dare class to the sixth grade at the Howard School, who would like to increase the grade levels there and provide this great resource to other grades beyond just the sixth grade. In the middle, senior, high school, we have ample opportunities for speakers to come into our Contemporary American Issues, which is our senior social studies class. All of our seniors take that. You know, it's really current events that are going on in the world today. Great resource for having, you know, a police officer come in, talk to the kids about things going on. Our American Legal Class and our Forensics Class are other great opportunities for guest speakers. And provide training to our staff. We've trained all of our teachers on enhanced lockdown procedures through Alice. But they always come up with questions. What about this? How would, how could we do this differently? So, having someone there on site would be helpful, and also talk about different types of bullying interventions. Attendance, intruency issues, someone who can meet with parents, talk to students about the ramifications of their poor attendance or tardiness, and also conducting home visits. Safety walks of the buildings and grounds, both before school and during school, now which create positive relationships with our students and staff, and assisting the school administration with a variety of different issues related to drugs, alcohol, bullying, harassment, weapons, threats, abuse, dating violence, restraining orders, things that we don't have all the expertise in, pulling in that expert and say, hey, how do we handle this? What's our best course of action? Often, throughout the year, we will have to send a representative to court, whether it's a child requiring assistance, formally what the chins was, and making sure kids are going to school. Juvenile case hearings we'll have to attend. Having a person to go to those would be very beneficial for all of us. If we hear of a major event, if someone has made a threat against the school, we pull together our crisis team, and that would, the SRO would certainly be part of that threat assessment team. In all the schools, we have student success team meetings and behavioral health team meetings, where topics come up of great importance to the safety of all students. And each month, the Plymouth County Juvenile Justice Group meets with administrators and School Resource Officers from the different towns and communities. Currently, we send our Assistant Principal to these meetings, but, you know, it'd be great if she could go with the SRO, because when they talk about West Bridgewater students who are court-involved, it's great to have that resource there. Throughout the year, we do safety trainings for our students. We talk about drug and alcohol awareness, distracted driving. And the younger levels, stranger danger, self-defense. We have a student safety text tip line, which we go over at the beginning of the year. But these are all trainings for our students that we would love to be able to continue to talk to the kids about throughout the year, and not just at the beginning of the year opening day assemblies. Certainly, part of it would be to monitor the front door and look at our security cameras, review them, you know, throughout the day. That would definitely be a piece of this job description. We have monthly meetings such as coffee hours, PTO meetings, drug nights. Again, getting out there into the community, not just into the schools. And being there during lunch duty, walking around, talking to kids, morning drop-off, parking lot concerns that may be coming up, afternoon pickup, community events, having that presence there would be very important. There's a lot that goes into it. There's a lot of things that we think this person could do. Like I said, we've got a great relationship with the police department. Their leadership there has been wonderful. Every time we've asked for assistance, they're there. We just feel that this is a real big piece to a puzzle that fits in well for safety and security, but also to maintain that feeling of safety throughout the school day and throughout the school year. So, we're looking for your support.
What's happening now, as far as the presence of police over there? I mean, and how much time is being spent over there by police at this time?
They're, they're walking through the building on a pretty regular basis. One to two times a day, we see officers. They'll come in, they'll, they'll do a walk-around. I can speak solely for the middle, senior, high school, but I do know that they come, they check in in the office, or sometimes they'll just walk through the building.
Isn't there a program where they, they spend time and they, like, do paperwork? And didn't we start doing that like past couple of years?
What we did is, because we didn't have officers in the schools
Right.
And they didn't have the resources to put them in at full-time, we started the school checks. Random times, twice a day, we do every school, the officer walks the entire school. So, every school's walked twice a day. After we did that, what we did is we put laptops in each one of the schools, so that the officer wants to go in, sit down, and actually do a report or something like that.
Right, right. That's what I thought, that we had that. Do we have that in all the schools, or just at the middle, senior, high school?
No, I didn't think so.
They're going in.
The laptops were in every school. We've had some problems with that, so that still needs to be worked on.
There's definitely presence. I mean
Oh, what's nice is, sometimes we see them, sometimes we don't. Sometimes they'll just come in and out, and they'll check doors for us. They do a lot right now.
You're absolutely right, though. I mean, when you started, you prefaced this whole presentation with, we get a lot of support from our police department, which we do in, in a lot of different areas. So, but I think what you're suggesting is that we need to take it to the next level. It's not, we're not the days of, you know, and people keep saying this, it's not our parents' world anymore. You know, we're not in the days when the Resource Officer, like, back in the day, when the Resource Officer was just the officer that, you know, picked up the true kids and brought them to school every day. We're well beyond that. So, I, I understand very clearly, you know, what you guys are looking for, and I would say that I support it. But then, we always have to consider, how are we gonna pay for that? And, you know, I was, I was actually involved in the first, the beginnings of the Safe School Plan, when things were even different then, and that was, what, 15 years ago or so? So, you know, it's, it's gonna be a matter of how are we gonna pay for it?
Right. And that's what, you know, that's really what the support is. If you remember in the first slide, it said that in the Mass. General Laws, and it says that the police in line with the superintendent will apply some
Right.
Pending allocation, if we have the money
Right.
Obviously. And so, when we had talked about it, the reason we're all four of us here is because what we really are asking for is an increase in a 1.0 FD to the police budget, not to the school budget, because we, we all agree that it should be a police officer
Right.
That still goes to morning roll call at the police station, and is a police officer, but they're just in the schools, because we think that that keeps the, they need to be a police officer. It can't just be a security person that comes
Right.
Through the school.
That was, that was kinda like a question that I had, too, was, like, who manages this person? So, the police department manages the person? Okay, well, that makes sense. Is that the structure? Do we know that these other towns have? Is that, are these other towns with the SROs, are they police officers in the town, or are they just their own?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, Minister, can I do recall if that was one of the initiatives in that compact, in the state compact, you know? I don't recall whether that was one of the
Yeah, no, it's not in there. I will say this, when I did my master's thesis on School Resource Officers, I act, I'm a huge believer in it. I, I did extensive research on it. There is no doubt that the person would be hired through the police department, still answerable to the police chief, but in consultation with the superintendent. At this point, I think it's just that the hope is, is that all the budgets in town, town budgets, school budgets, if all the budgets could come in with very minor, modest increases this year, it's gonna go a long way to make sure that we can financially afford it, 'cause I think as long as the money is there, obviously, this is something that it's a top priority for everyone.
I'd just like to say, I support it very, very highly, and it's, it's needed in this day and age. I mean, you've gotta take all kinds of precaution in protecting our, our children at the school level there. We see what's happening. You know, it's just unfortunate that the world has gone the way it has. But like I said, somewhere, you know, this is a good time to come in, because it's before we start the budget, we haven't even got on to the thing, and I certainly am gonna make it a priority of looking into this, and somewhere we, we'll be able to fit it in, I hope, to
Yeah, and that's why we wanted to come to you now, at least to get the conversation started, 'cause we understand budgets, and that maybe it would be of time. And there's also, Lieutenant Flaherty, when he spoke to us, and you explained to us how, okay, if it's someone that's coming out of their police force that they already have, well, then they have to get someone new to come in. So, it would be something that would take time, 'cause someone has to go through the academy and all this stuff. So, it may not happen in September, but we needed to have the conversation now to get it going
No, it's a good time.
Working with the police. And I think what we do wanna stress is, this is so much more than just keeping kids safe from people coming into the school.
Right.
Our schools are safe.
Right.
It's, but we don't know when something could happen, and it could happen any time. But there are so many other internal things and things that kids bring with them. Just look at this opiate crisis, and all the drug issues and things like that, and the mental health things that we're dealing with. So, there's so much more to it. That's just one piece of it.
Well, the chief is there, and how about a car? I mean, I know there's other things that connect it to this, you know, when you do have it. Do we have a car that we, we can use over there? And is there gonna be any, any problem with that?
That would, that would be an issue.
Okay.
I think one of, another one of the big benefits to this would be that one officer interacting with all the kids.
Right.
We have offices in and out, and there are different offices, and it's great that they get to know everybody, and we probably still continue that, only more and more in limited cases. But they build up that personal relationship for that one officer. And if they've got that personal relationship with that one officer, and they've got something to tell somebody, then they're a lot more likely to go up and tell that officer
Right.
If there is a relationship.
I think, I think what I'm hearing even from Selectmen Marara, too, and I, I think we support it. We have your support, which is, we need to figure out from a budgetary standpoint, you know, how we're gonna pay for it, so.
I can make a motion to the fact, we make it a priority to try to, you know, get this thing, get this thing moving, because it's very, very needed.
Okay, move. I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very nice. I love the tie, the great colors there.
I knew.
I love that. Yeah, and yes, yeah, me, too. Yep, yeah, right, yeah. Love that. Thank you, Mr. Bodwell. Okay, so now, we're gonna move on to the, so you don't get to do the, the next one, huh?
No.
Oh, boy. Oh, you're lucky.
I'm not lucky.
Run while you can. Okay, so next on the agenda is a presentation regarding the Spring Street School Roof Presentation. Uh, well, do you have a presentation, or you just have a verbal thing? All right, you, you can stay there, and we'll put it up on the board, and
Thanks.
Yeah, you don't have to sit up there in the hot seat.
Wonderful. So, back in January, we came with a statement of interest for the Spring Street School Roof. As you know, it's definitely needed, and as we drive by, visually, don't like the way it looks. But it's having a lot of problems, a lot of leaks. So, we submitted the statement of interest, and on June 3rd, the MSBA approved the two partner into a schematic design study for the new roof. And luckily, they did approve us. And I have Greg Walsh and Randall Luther, who were assigned to us. Greg Walsh is from Tom and Capital Advisors, who's gonna be our OPM for the school roof, and from Tysoo Kim, Randall Luther. And they, this is an accelerated repair project, so it really is accelerated. They, our first meeting started beginning of October, and they're already doing this, they've already completed the schematic design and submitted it to the MSBA. So, really, we're here just to kind of update you on where we are in the process. We, luckily, our reimbursement rate was increased from 49.64 to 52.69 percent. So, it's an extra 3 percent that we can get from the MSBA.
How did, how did that happen? What facilitated that?
It's good and bad.
Oh, okay.
The wealth factor went down, which means that we get more money, but that's okay. It works for this project. Hi, Jerry.
Hello.
How are you? So, we did submit the schematic design to the MSBA on December 9th. So, we're really here just to kind of update you on our progress. The budget was higher than we expected, but they, they did have a conversation with David and Patty last week to see if they could get that down. So, they did do that, and I believe the budget was submitted to you guys, so we'll cover that. But our next step is really just to update you right now, and on January 27th, the MSBA Board votes on it, to see if they're gonna go forward with the actual project. And if they do go forward, we would request a special town meeting mid-February to get it approved by the town, and then once, if it's approved, we would go to construction in, right after school lets out, because we obviously don't wanna do that while the school's here, while the kids are in school.
We should be able to finish it, if everything goes well, in the summer, summer break.
So, and if you want to show them the, we have some plans and some recent samples.
Show and tell portion.
Yeah, there we go. We do have the budget, by the way. We do have it in our packet.
Yes.
So
So, it's 1.4, 1.3 something.
Yeah, 1.338.
And so, 50 percent, well, 52.69 percent would be reimbursed by the MSBA, which really is helpful. But it's still
So, mathematically, what is that? What's our piece of that mathematically?
Your piece is about $633,000.
So, I'm sure you're all very familiar with the school. It's, from a roofing perspective, it's kind of a fussy little project. There's, and a roofing project, what you ideally is a wide-open roof without a whole lot of pieces sticking up out of it, or a lot of edge conditions. This is all edge condition. It's all skylights sticking up. You drive by, you can see the pyramid skylights all over. On the one hand, it creates a lot of nice spaces on the inside, brings in a lot of daylight, but from a roofing perspective, it is somewhat a challenge. We did some test cuts of your existing roof, to see what we had up there. The good news is that the substrate, which is a gypsum deck, 4 gypsum deck, which is not typically done anymore, was very popular at the vintage of this building. It's a, it's a fine material, except when it gets wet, it can get very spongy and can lose its structural stability very quickly. But we did a half dozen test cuts. In general, the deck was in good shape everywhere, so that's good news. We also did a little bit of inspection from up below, where it was visible. Again, it all looked pretty good. We also checked for hazardous materials. Asbestos frequently is used in flashings and things, and adhesives on roofing systems. It came up negative for asbestos, so that's also good news. So, we looked at addressing the roof the way you have it. Currently, there are several scuppers, a lot of which have been added over time to deal with ponding and things. They actually cause washout on the play area over here. There's some scuppers currently, and a few other locations.
Excuse me one second, I'm sorry. Can you do me a favor? Yeah, okay, thank you. 7:30, okay. All right, so, being that, excuse me, one minute. Being that it is 7:30 right now, we do have at 7:30 a public hearing, so hold that thought.
Absolutely.
Well, we'll get back to you, okay? So, we're required to hold a public hearing at 7:30 today? So, pursuant to, thank you, pursuant, I got it on here, too, but, okay, so pursuant to Chapter 138, the Massachusetts General Laws of Public Hearing will be held on Wednesday, December 16, 2015, at 7:30 PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room. Town Hall, 65 North Main Street, West Bridgewater, Mass. On the application for a beer and wine on-premise liquor license and entertainment license by Rego Hospitality Incorporated, doing business as Epicure, 320 West Center Street, Unit 104, West Bridgewater, Mass. Interested parties are invited to be present and to be heard. Board of Selectmen Chairman Nancy Maloney published under the West Bridgewater News Wednesday, December 2nd, 2015. Motion to open the public hearing?
So, move.
Second.
Move, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the public hearing is open. Do we have anybody here from the
We have here. I'm not.
So, we have in our packets the, the application? Do we have any comments?
Madam Chairwoman, it's your choice. You can either stay in the public hearing, we have opened it, or you can go back to your presentation, and, and when the gentleman comes in, we would turn over to that topic. It's your choice.
I guess, well, unless, all right, we'll wait, we'll close the public hearing, and then go back to the open hearing.
No, all, all, you could just stay in the public hearing, we'll move on to this topic, and then after this topic is over
The public hearing session?
Yep, you're, you're, okay.
Okay, all right. Well, I guess the gen, you're up again. What was your name again?
Randall Luther.
I'm sorry, Randall Luther, I forgot your name. Okay, so I guess you're up again.
So, I don't remember where I left off.
Scupper.
Scupper's all, right. So, I know it's all very exciting.
Getting washout in the playground area.
Exactly. And that was a priority for the administration, to try and address that. So, we went back, and, and we were able to rework the roof pitches, and, oh, that's one of the other points, the existing roof is essentially dead flat, which is, is not really permitted anymore. So, we had to provide positive drainage to all the drains, existing drains, to the extent that's possible, and try and eliminate the scuppers. We've accomplished all that. We will need to relocate two drains a little bit, and there We will need to relocate two drains a little bit, and there's one scupper left that we cannot, this time, eliminate. But generally, we sort of achieved what we were looking for. I have, I handed out, there they are.
You have the other pieces in there?
So, we look at the different kind of roofing systems. Another kind of goal of the administration, because there are these pyramids that you can see from the ground, the roof is visible, you have a wonderful new high school facility that you can see kind of in the background, and so, the hope was that we could kind of match the same color of the metal roofing that you have there. And that led us to initially, a TPO roof, which is that gray roof that you have right there. That one. And so, that was the initial decision.
Is that a plastic, or?
It's a thermal polyolefin.
Thermal polyolefin.
Yeah, basically, it's PVC or plastic. Yeah, it's, I couldn't get a composition of it, but. It's, the seams are heat welded, so it is a good product. With any roofing, seams are typically one of the biggest concerns. But, we priced that out, and the initial numbers were higher than desired, so we recalibrated. And right now, the base estimate that you have before, it was based on that other roof, which is an EPDM roof, which is really kind of the Chevy of the roofing world. It's probably the bulk of roofs in the Northeast. Everyone knows it, it's just fine. However, colors are very limited, it's basically black or white. And the white EPDM is a rather newer product, so we would be opposing a black EPDM here. The TPO roof color will be an alternate, and so, if we get favorable bids, we still have the opportunity to vote the TPO roof. We are, as part of an MSBA project, you need to meet this Massachusetts Stretch Energy Code, that also places a little bit of a burden on the project, in that the minimum insulation that is required, in this case, is five-inch minimum over the whole roof. And then, we have to add pitch on top of that, so we have places where we'll have seven, eight, nine inches of insulation, and then it'll go down to the low points of about five inches. And in drains, you're allowed to go an inch below that, so we're down at around four inches at the drains. But typically, the minimum here is five inches and up. So, that adds a little bit of cost that you wouldn't necessarily have to do, but certainly in schools, you know, it'll certainly help with your operating costs. Your roof is an enormous place for heat loss. Schools almost all roof, so that'll probably help a little bit. Are there any questions?
So, what's the history now? We've done a lot of, over the years.
This is our last one.
We've done a lot of roof.
This is it. This is our last roof.
This is our last one.
Okay.
So, we'll start over again.
Yeah, you want to say a specific?
No.
No, because we've done a, no, I mean, really, no, you know what I'm saying, right?
You're absolutely correct.
Mr. Holden, I mean, like, we've gone through these discussions for years.
We're in New England, and the flat roofs just.
Yeah, I know. This one in particular is of an issue, yes, I understand that. So, what Mr. Holden just said, though, was, you know, this is it with this roof. So, this is, this is going to be our last.
What was that last arrival?
This is.
For our lifetime, right?
Yeah, it's a twenty-year, no-dollar limit warranty. So, at least, at least twenty years.
Is this something that's going to be done when the students are in there, or it's going to be done?
No, over the summer break.
No, it'll, it'll, once it's too much out, it'll start. And it'll go pretty quickly, I mean, they'll be done easily.
He's up in Brockton there doing a roof, and my son was very, very involved in it, and he's a crane operator.
Oh, yeah.
And of course, they don't want them lifting, any kind of thing, over the children.
Absolutely.
But the problem, that my son told me, was, they were loading the roofs. And I just got a hold of City Council, and he made the call when I was right there, told the building inspector to get right over there. Because I just didn't want to be home to have that information in my mind.
Yep.
And then, the roofs come down, you know what I mean? But that's, that's what are very, very critical.
We'll actually move our summer school program until the winter.
Yeah, because I just didn't want to, you know, if it was going to be done during the thing, they're going to be after.
We'll just follow our heads.
This administration.
Because that roofing material weighs a lot of speaking.
Oh, absolutely. And, yeah, they're not careful about how they load roofs.
But it's, you know, it's just, you know, safety, and hey, but it does happen, you know, I mean, they try to, you know, protect one side, and then they cut another, you know? So, you got to be careful.
It's ready to, Gabby, you had something to add?
I just want to be able to, in reference to Selectman Marera's thought processes, that's why we're having this conversation tonight, because we're thinking that in the month of January, we are going to ask the board to actually open a warrant for a special town meeting. If we could have a special town meeting in, say, late February?
Yeah.
Then the hope is, is that we have to have a bidding process. Fulfill that bidding process, and be able to be out to bid quick enough, so that way, as soon as the students leave in June, we have the project ready, so that way, in July and August, we can fulfill this project prior to the reopening of schools in September.
What a bad question.
And also, with the way the MSBA have their board meetings, we're actually going to the first board meeting for the accelerated repair program. So, if we get out first to bid, it's wonderful, because then we get better bids, and then, at the end, when everyone's already saturated the market, their bids come in higher. So, it would be very important to.
Well, I think we're all in agreement, it's got to be done.
Almost definitely.
Make a motion to go forward.
And I'll go second.
Move, second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Entertained a motion for a recess?
Thank you.
Move, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, we're just in a recess. Okay, reopening the Board of Selectmen meeting of December 16th. In the public hearing section, we have Mr. Regio, is that?
Rego.
Rego, Mr. Rego. Okay, so Mr. Rego is here, regarding the public hearing on a premise beer and wine license, and application for entertainment license at, hold on one second, 320 West Center Street, Unit 104, correct? Okay. Mr. Regio, want to?
Sure, thank you guys.
Come forward and give your presentation to us?
Thank you guys very much for taking the time to see me. I've been a food and beverage professional for about twenty years, and I've always had a dream to one day open up my own little place, and so, the time is now for me. And what I'd like to do over in this place is set up a very small, very humble, but very nice wine and beer bar, that will feature jazz music, old-school jazz, Billie Holiday, Louis Armstrong kind of stuff. And then, we have a very nice, small menu, it's going to be small plates, appetizer-size, specialty cheeses, nice prosciuttos, some crustinis kind of things. And, yeah, so we're very excited. I think that there's been a lot of people that I've talked to that are excited about it, that I think that there's definitely some interest in the area. And so, just excited to move on with the process.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
What's the name of your question, Rick?
It's going to be called Epicure.
And this is on the, what, like, is it?
I'm so sorry?
What, like, is it?
Yes, that's correct.
Is it on the back, or on the front units?
It's one of the front units.
Happy you chose to do business in time.
And the TIPS certification, you are E.TIPS certified, I think I read in here?
Yes, I am.
And you plan on having no more than four employees?
Correct. And I will miss.
And they will all be TIPS certified?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Okay. All right, Selectman Marera, any questions?
I'm kind of excited myself, I think it'll go with something like that, really.
It's good, yeah, different.
Wish you luck, I'm certainly if they were.
I like the prosciutto. That's good.
Yeah.
I like that.
My, I come from an Italian family, and my wife's, she may Italian, so, like, we're definitely going to have, like, some nice, some nice food for the paisanos.
Sounds good. That's good. Good to hear. Okay, even though I got an Irish name. It's deceiving.
I'll make a motion to approve this. I see.
I'll second, but I do have one other question.
Okay, move, second, any further discussion?
You already met with the Board of Health, and everything's all set there for the septic system and everything?
Yes, the septic is good, and then, I have, I have spoken to them as well, and so, I know that everything that they will require.
Very good. I have no other questions.
Okay, so, and it appears, based on the information that we got from the police department, everything is in order, and, and, and they, they recommend, you know, that we, that we move forward with it, and all the paperwork is in order, correct?
Absolutely. He's actually been a pleasure, everything was super great, so, he's a welcome candidate.
We're going to say welcome difference.
Yeah, welcome difference, yeah, right, right. Oh, boy. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Welcome to West Bridgewater, good luck over there.
Congratulations.
I really appreciate it.
Anything we can do during your grand opening, let us know, we'll be happy to let people know about it.
Definitely.
Keep an eye on it.
Definitely will, when things come up.
And we'll be happy to show up, right?
Yeah. Appreciate seeing you guys there, definitely. Thank you very much.
Okay, great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a blessed Christmas.
Thank you.
Entertained a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move.
Move, second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, public hearing is closed. Moving on to the open session, at 7:40, we have an appointment to the Council on Aging, Patricia Sherman. Would you like to come forward and give us a little information about yourself? We did get correspondence from the Council on Aging. So, you want to just give us a little, quick little update?
Well, I have an extensive background in geriatrics, pediatrics too. I was.
Full hands, huh? Specter.
I've been a nurse for forty-something years. I worked at Cardinal Cushing, Good Sam, for twenty-five years. I left when life care opened after nine months, and became the Director of Nursing there, and I was there for nineteen years. And I just retired two months ago.
Really? Wow.
I stayed on, on a per diem basis. Because when you work for a company for that long, and that becomes like your family. And so, it meant too much to me just to walk out the door, so I go in on an as-needed basis and help out when they need me.
Yeah, great facility, yes.
It is a wonderful facility, and I told my administrator, we did this, we built it, we made this what it is, so I want to keep it that way.
But do you have any experience relevant to the position?
Yeah, 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 really.
That's very impressive.
Yes, no, that really is. So.
Most of my career, outside of the first five years, the rest of it's all been in management.
Nice, nice. And so, you want to step up with the responsibility of being on the Council on Aging Board of Directors, huh?
Sure, I'd love to be.
And we have a recommendation from the board, you know, for your recommendation, so entertain a motion?
Motion to go along with the recommendation of the Council on Aging for the appointment.
I'll second the motion, I'm kind of thrilled to second this motion.
Yes, that's great.
Thank you.
I had to speak over there.
It's my pleasure.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Congratulations, and thank you for stepping up to help out.
Thank you. I'll enjoy it.
It's good to see some fresh faces, you know, a lot of times, you go to these committees, the same people on every committee.
Over and over, yeah.
It's good to have someone on there with a lot of experience and energy and.
That's great. Thank you, thank you for your time.
I have a lot of that.
Yeah, there we go. That's great, thank you. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, 7:45.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. We have a presentation by Chief Clark, okay, on the East Bridgewater Hope Outreach Presentation, and he's got some information for us, so. Chief Clark, go ahead.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm sure that everybody in town, over the last month or so, has got a couple of reverse 911 calls, and what those calls were about, there's a, there's a group over in East Bridgewater called EB Hope. Because of this opioid epidemic, they put together a group, there are links both on the police department website and the town website, telling people how to, they could get ahold of them on their website, there's an email, there's phone numbers, they meet the first and third Thursday, over at the church on Pleasant Street in East Bridgewater. There are no, there's no law enforcement involvement, it's all people that are there to support either people who feel they have an addiction problem, family members of somebody with an addiction problem. They've hooked people up with inpatient services, outpatient services, they do training on Narcan. It's, it's really a great group, it's working very hard to help people address the, any addiction issues that they have. So, I just wanted to come in and put it out there, let people know about it, let people know how to get to, to access these services.
So, thank you for, thank you, I'm trying to find the email, you had, you had also sent, so, thank you for the information, EB Hope, and, you know, we appreciate that the, that our police forces, you know, joint forces with EB Hope, and that, you know, we've got that information out there. I know Governor Baker's office has also started the listening tour that he had on the opioid addiction, and then there's also the No Stigma Program that's going on from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security.
Correct.
So, there's a lot of things generated around that, and I appreciate, you know, that our police department has gone on board with that, and, and pushing that forward. You also sent me the data, do you have that data with you? It's on our packets.
I don't, I had printed out.
I'm trying to find the email that you sent me, because there's some interesting data about, that just came out, and that's what prompted me to ask Chief if he could come in and speak with us, because it's, it's.
I'd actually printed it out, and I left it on my desk. When I walked out, I was in a little bit of a hurry to get over here.
I think I have the email right here.
Well, this has a, sort of a printout.
Yeah, that's the EB Hope, no, but that's the program. He had the data on the, the, you can't, you can't, can you project, you can't project from there? You can't? How come?
Apparently, this laptop is too old and doesn't interact. Remember that time I was having such a hard time?
Oh, that's too bad, because I could email it to you, and you could just put it right up on there, so.
I'm getting a new one soon, so.
Did you find it, Chief? Because I found it on mine.
I've got it on mine here. The, the drop-in outreach program on 11/19, they assisted nineteen people, twelve-three, twelve people were assisted, 11/5, seven people. Now, this was during the meetings on the Thursday nights, during the non-meeting times, non-drop-in hours, 11/24, two people were assisted, 11/31, 12/10, they assisted one person, 11/1, one. And it's anybody from, some of these, they actually broke it down, family, family members, friends, self-seeking help. So, you know, from West, from West Bridgewater, there were actually nine people that have gone and, and looked for help, so I think it's great that people know that this resource is here, that people are going and reaching out to that resource. And then, it actually broke it down to how the visitors learned of EB Hope Drop-In Center. The reverse 911 was, was most of the people. But I know if some people are like me, they get a, they see a number, it's an unknown number, either they don't pick up, they pick it up and hang it up, or whatever.
Right.
So that's why I'm trying to get, you know, as, as much out here as I can. Unknown reason, nine people, newspapers, a few of them, Facebook with some of them. So, you know, we, we've got it on our website, we've got it on the Facebook page, the town, town website has it. So we're trying to get this out here and... Narcan training, twenty-one people have been trained in Narcan, so...
That's a good question. Kind of relevant, this is kind of relevant to what you just said. A lot of people know about it from the reverse 911. A lot of people don't have home phones anymore. Is it possible for someone to register a cellphone?
Yes, I have, I have both my phones. I have my cellphone, you might, through the Sheriff's Department.
So if somebody wanted to register a cellphone, I know, you know, your friends only have a cellphone, they call the department.
Go on the Plymouth County Sheriff's Department website, and it's the code red, under the code red. Sign up their phone.
We get it bulletin on the community channel, and, you know, don't have a home phone, register here for reverse 911s. And also put that on the website. I don't mean to sidetrack.
No, that's a, that's a great, that's a great point.
You know, I don't have a home, I do have a home phone, nobody uses it, nobody answers it, so just there for...
It's a great point. It's funny, because when it, my home phone, I just thought it was a telemarketer, I hung up, and as soon as I got done, you know, a couple minutes later, my cellphone's ringing, so...
Right, right.
It's like whoever's calling has both numbers, so...
So that part, that part in here, Chief, about the Narcan training, what is that all about?
Narcan, it's, it's something that, that we now carry in the cruisers.
Right, but what was the training piece? What was that? I was confused about what that was about. What are the training people, how to use it?
Teach a family member how to use the Narcan, how to administer the Narcan.
Yeah, great, great program. And like I said, I'm glad to see that our police department is, you know, in that we have always partnered with our other communities, with the Web Task Force, but also with the schools in, in trying to raise awareness, so...
This group is doing great work. They've reached out to the area towns, I'd like, you know, give them a little pat on the back as well. They reached out to the area towns, you know, Whitman, East Bridgewater, Bridgewater. I'm not sure who else is in it, but I know there's a half a dozen towns in there, so... It's great to see people out there working like that towards, towards, you know, helping people with this.
So would it be, would you guys agree that maybe something to the organization?
Absolutely.
You know, thanking them for, you know, including us and, and getting, you know, and helping us to, to help our residents as well?
I'm sure the Reach organization probably already knows about it, but if not, forward the information to Reverend Ashton on the Reach Group.
Yeah, okay.
Motion, send a letter of thanks and reaching out to see if there's anything we can do to help the organization.
Move second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, you too.
You got the...
You're also, but you're, your next one on the, yeah, your next on the agenda here, so hold on one second, okay? Yeah, you are.
I got something to give you, too. I got, there's a plate that was lost up in Manly Street, so you can take that along with you, too. Found on Manly Street.
Okay, so next on the agenda, we have, and I just want to get this in my notes first. Okay, so next on the agenda, we have vote to begin selection for full-time patrolmen. So I just want to talk real quick about what we're, what we're doing there, or what you need us to do?
We've had a couple of openings on the department for a while now. So new list, the new civil service list was issued first of November. So the detectives have been busy doing background checks and everything, you know, looking at the people that are on the list. So because we have the two openings, we'd like to have the board as the appointing authority. Look at, look at hiring two officers.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion out of fact. I've already talked to him before about this, and you have the money and the budget, too.
They are both budgeted positions.
I'll make a motion to start the proceedings here.
Move second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Okay, so we'll start that motion then, right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Have a nice holiday.
Thank you, too.
Okay, moving on. Entertainer motion to approve minutes of November nineteenth meeting.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. I am not, I just want to disclose, I am not voting on this, because I wasn't present at that meeting, so... All those in favor?
Aye.
So two and one, I guess recusal, one abstention. Entertainer motion to accept or review minutes of the December third meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Okay, so now we're into, it's that time of year when we start the process of renewing licenses. So we have in the packet here the listing of all of the licenses that are up for renewal. So we're going to start with 2016 license renewals. So we have liquor licenses, liquor license and cordial liquor permits, entertainment licenses, Sunday entertainment licenses, and public amusement licenses, okay? So those are all the licenses that we're gonna, that we're gonna talk about. So I'm gonna take first, as a group, the liquor licenses, the entertainment, and the public amusement licenses, okay? So we're gonna vote the, vote on them as a group. If you have anything in that list that we have in our packet that you have a question about, then we'll take that out of the list, all right? Just so we don't have to go through each one individually, okay? You got the list?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so I'm just gonna go through and just, and just name the liquor licenses. SBS Incorporated doing business as Fridas, Samoset Ride and Gun Club, Yankee Inn Incorporated, Canoe Club Ballroom, NAR Inc. doing business as Jesse's Liquors, Fleck Incorporated doing business as Motion Gas and Propane, Gigantor Corp. doing business as Macy's Liquors, Hockamark Liquors, Charlie Horse, Govor Incorporated doing business as Town Line General Store, Riverbank Country Club, Trukey Supermarkets, The Corner Market, Chili Head BBQ, Boston Tavern, Heidi's Catering, Chili's Bar and Grill, Crystal's Kitchen, Athena Asian Bistro, West Bridgewater Quick Stop Incorporated, Vera Catering Incorporated doing business as Grand Slam Pizza and Pub, and Batavis Incorporated doing business as Nico Bar and Grill.
I have no questions. I have no problem.
And all I would do is ask you to take a motion to approve subject to all paperwork being completed by December 31st, 2015.
So moved.
On the Samoset Ride and Gun Club?
I'll abstain in voting on that one, because that's...
Okay.
I'm on the board there.
Okay, so the motion is to, it's been approved and seconded with the exception of Eldon Marrera's vote on Samoset Ride and Gun Club with the, with the, or do we need to do two separate ones? Okay, all right, so...
I was just asking if you could do two separate ones.
So let's do...
And I'll list, I will list them.
Right now, it's all except the Ride and Gun Club.
Okay, all except the Ride and Gun Club. So motion to accept all, accept liquor licenses except for the Ride and Gun Club. Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept the liquor license of Samoset Ride and Gun Club?
Is there a, I'm sorry, just one question. That's a nonprofit group that operates up on Mathfield Street. Is there a fee associated with that?
They do have a fee at $700. It's a discounted fee, because they're a nonprofit, but you're not allowed to give, you know...
Oh, not allowed to do it?
There's no local fee that we could waive?
No.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
I'll move the motion to approve the Ride and Gun Club.
Seconded. All those in favor?
I'll abstain on that.
So two and one abstention. Okay, moving on to the liquor license and cordial liquors permit for Maragio Incorporated doing business as Narahuka Lounge.
Motion approved.
Move second. With, subject to all the paperwork is completed and all the requirements are met.
Right.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Entertainment license. SBS Incorporated doing business as Fridas, Yankee Inn Incorporated, Charlie Horse, Riverbank Country Club, Boston Tavern, Chili Head BBQ, Heidi Catering, Maragio Incorporated doing business as Narahuka Lounge, and, and Badavas Incorporated doing business as, I don't know, Vaz...
Badavas.
But Badavas, thank you, Incorporated. Well, I really, really butchered that one.
Wait, when you say Badavas, I was thinking like something else.
Badavas Incorporated doing business as Nico Bar and Grill. Entertainer motion to approve those entertainment licenses? Move seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then I'm gonna put the last two together. We have a Sunday, whoops, 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 go back there. We have a Sunday entertainment license for Charlie Horse and a public amusement for Charlie Horse. Pending that all the paperwork and everything is in order.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, so now we're gonna move on to, do I gotta read all these?
It's your choice. You can read them or as presented.
Yeah, I would think probably as presented. There's a ton of them here. Okay, so we have the common viculites, vicutiles, the common vic licenses, the Class 1, 2, 3, and Transfer Station licenses. So we're gonna start with the common vics. And so I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Moved present as, as presented, again, pending the satisfaction of all paperwork. And let the public know if they wish for a full list, it's available in the office, and it's online.
It's online, right.
Second.
Move seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
The Class 1, 2, and 3 and Transfer Station licenses?
So moved. And they're going to have satisfaction of all paperwork.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Okay, so these, all these people that we just approved their licenses, then we just need to make sure that by the end of the year, they've got everything in order.
That's correct.
Correct.
So that, that it goes into effect across the year, right? Okay. All right, very good. So next on the agenda is to sign the ABCC Population Certification, so...
If we were like, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, go ahead.
If we were like Cape Town, where we would have seasonal population, our potential quota could go up. But that doesn't happen here, so this just is a sign off that we aren't gonna have any increase in our population over the summer.
Oh, okay.
Something that really affects, impacts other towns, but not us.
Okay.
We have to sign it. We're required to submit this to the ABCC.
Okay.
Motion to approve, submitted.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Entertainer motion to release the April sixteenth, 2015 executive session minutes.
And please, a motion should also include as redacted.
As redacted.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda, reward contract for the DPW Services for two, February first, 2016 through February thirty-first, 2017. Okay, so this is for the surge contract?
That is correct, and it's January thirty-first.
Okay, it's January thirty-first, yes. Entertainer motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Okay. Communication from, and reports from boards, commissions, and town officials. So we have in our packet a, we did? Which one did we skip? Oh, oh, yes, we did. Okay, so backing up to H, I skipped over that. That wasn't, there was no subliminal message there. Discussion on appointing a municipal liaison to the State Ethics Committee. And I believe Slickman Marrera, this was something that you...
Well, I picked this up on a town report from East Bridgewater, where they have an ethics committee comprised of one person. But another was brought up to my attention there many years ago, that Matt Albany had something brought up before the town meeting. It didn't pass the town meeting, and I was sort of looking into that. Because lately, we're, you know, we've made some news about the Ethics Commission, and I was just wondering where, if something like that could fit into our, our agenda here. If there's such a thing as a committee, and how would that operate? We, we seem to be getting hit regularly by this, and I don't want to say anymore about this. I think we'll be talking after this on our agenda, as far as ethics goes.
Okay, so what's the, I don't guess, I don't understand what the concept is.
I don't know either. The only thing I know, that it was, it was on their, a town report in East Bridgewater, they actually have a committee, and that was comprised of one person. And I told Dave about it, and he says, "Well, maybe we can talk about it and look into it."
So do other towns have a municipal liaison?
I am not aware of one, although obviously East Bridgewater does. I think that the spirit of this position is as follows. Is that if you're on, if you're an employee or on a board or committee, and you are concerned that a vote that you're about to take, or an action that you're about to partake in, could pose a potential ethics violation, is that you could go to this municipal liaison and ask this person to verify whether or not the action would pass muster with the Ethics Division. However, I will tell you, is that one, is that if you, if you ever are in doubt, you already do have two options. Both of them are at no charge, and they are both confidential services. One is, is that you are able to contact the State Ethics Division on a daily basis. They have what they call an attorney, an attorney on, on the day. And that person, he or she will give you advice on what you're contemplating as a vote or an action, whether it would pass muster or not. And that is a confidential free service. The other option is, and this is etched in law, is that anybody that, again, that is an employee, board or committee member, can contact me, I can put them in touch with town council, and town council will issue a letter, again confidential, to that person to let them know as to whether or not the action or the vote they're about to partake would be an ethics violation. In my opinion, this would give you a third option if the board so chose to go with that. My only concern is that first, it would have to be an attorney, because it would have to be somebody who is versed in this. The second is, of course, is that I would then be concerned about liability, because if you went to this third person, and this third person gave you advice that turned out to be wrong, obviously we're creating, we're creating a liability issue. And the third is, is that this person, if we were to create it, would also have to understand and respect the confidentiality of any and all requests. My feeling is, is that since the other two options are already available, that they would be sufficient. But that doesn't mean that a third option is not a possibility. That is the way I understand this position to work.
My personal opinion is, you already get a disclosure you have to sign each year with a full explanation of the ethics. And every two years, you have to take a computer-based training program that's mandatory for you to serve on any committee or commission. And I think any more layers is just redundant and clouding the waters.
Well, I didn't know if it would fit into the thing, but now we explain the thing out there, and I, like I said, I'm pretty well satisfied with what we have then.
Well, I think maybe one, you know, Eldon, something we could do is add, when we send out that disclosure to everybody, because everybody has to sign the disclosure each year, is let them know those two options are available to them if and when they ever have a question.
Yeah, that's correct.
They've got a separate sheet, they get it.
Well, that's fine. I just thought that when I see something like that, if there's anywhere we can fit it in that will benefit us, I just bring it out to the board.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so moving on to the request from Mark Bardwell for placement of a new speed limit sign on Howard Street. So we got information in our packet from the principal of the middle and senior high school, Mark Bardwell. And he's asking about that there is a 25 mile per hour sign coming towards West Central Street. But he's requesting that a sign be placed behind, be placed near the police station parking lot on Howard Street. He's also talked to the safety officer, Winkler, about this. So, Gagnon, you got any more to add to that?
Yeah, I drove out, and it's, it's interesting, because I drive the road every day, and the request is actually factually accurate. If you were to go from, say, the post office towards Route 106, you will see that there are two speed limit signs posted at 30 miles an hour up to Spring Street. I'm sorry, one, one that's posted at 30 miles an hour up to Spring Street. And then at Spring Street, it's posted for 25. But in reverse, there is only one speed limit posted at 30 past Spring Street. So somebody turning on to Howard Street from 106 would have no idea what the speed limit is from that junction to Spring Street. So I think it's a fair request. The Highway Department is certainly able and capable of doing it. But being a policy decision, it's a vote of the board.
Motion to approve the request.
Second.
Move seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. We also have in our packet a request from the West Bridgewater Middle Senior High School to can at the transfer station on Saturday, December nineteenth. And the proceeds to go to the Spanish Honor Society, and they're trying to raise funds to support a project like supporting a young girl in Central America, providing small book and scholarships for our seniors, and allowing us to run various school events. There are some stipulations to canning at the transfer station. The highway superintendent has given us his recommendations that they must wear safety vests. They should see the attendant for that, and that they must stand inside the gate. Entertainer motion?
I'll make a motion to, Your Honor, this...
So moved, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Okay, so we have also a site plan review for a special permit application for Casey Kemp Warehouse Storage. So this is located at 265 South Main Street, and they are seeking a special permit and site plan review from the Board of Appeals to amend the pre-existing non-conforming use of warehouse storage to a warehouse and distribution. So we have in the packet the, I don't see any kind of, just the application here, it looks like.
Yeah, there's, there's no map, because there's no, there's no structural difference. There's no construction.
Yep.
There's, the only request is...
The use is...
Is that, exactly, the change of use. Currently, they store bread products there, and what they now want to do is be able to also distribute bread products from the facility. So it is just a special permit request for change of use.
No, I'll make a motion. I have no problem with that. I think that that isn't in the bio, that's the bio we spelled out. So they can do this.
Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. All right, we also have correspondence from Chief, Fire Chief Hunt, asking that Pat Harrington be their representative to the Computer Advisory Committee. Entertainer motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, under communication and reports from boards, I also did receive an email from our town accountant, Ann McNorton. She has requested a goal of expanding her role in the budgetary process. She, in the email that she sent to me, she also copied Selectman Lawrence on that, and she indicated that she could start doing that immediately by attending all Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen meetings. What I would like to recommend is that we place this request on the agenda for our next meeting to discuss with Mrs. McNorton about, you know, what this, what this expansion is all about, so. Like to recommend that we-
Make a motion for her under advisement and ask her to-
Attend the next meeting.
I'll second it.
Okay, moved and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Correspondence from the public to determine course of action, act on a request from the Girl Scouts for permission to use the town hall parking lot to sell Girl Scout cookies from December 19th, 2015, through December 29th, on Saturday and Sunday.
Just to be clear, I know it looks kind of funny on the agenda, it's, it's just on the weekends, so it won't be like, when we're, thank God, because I'll be up there. I love Girl Scout cookies.
And ending sometime the end of February. Okay, so this doesn't say that, though. So this says, so this says, the request says, beginning Saturday 12/19, and ending sometime the end of February.
Oh, this must be a typo, instead of 12, it should say 2.
Right, yes, yes, so 2. Okay, so, so I'll switch back to, in our packets here, we have the request that they sell, that the Girl Scouts sell Girl Scout cookies on Saturdays and Sundays from this Saturday to sometime the end of April 2016.
Oh.
Moved. Second? I did?
I was just going to say all the way along.
That's forever.
Oh, my God, February. February. I know, that one, that one's kind of messy.
We'll just say, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so review, all right, so moving on to Jason, Jason Ross, oh, wait a minute, Jason Ross, okay. So we also have correspondence from Jason Daniels. On behalf of the Cable Advisory Board, I would like to formally recommend that Jason Ross fill our remaining vacancy on the West Bridgewater Cable Advisory Board. I mean, yes, board, right, committee.
Do you fill the goal of within-
Is that a board or a committee? Hold on.
Committee.
That's a committee?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like us to communicate with Jason to make sure that he is available to attend these meetings. He's on another committee that's asked for his resignation, because he hasn't been able to make the meetings, and it's caused a hardship in that committee. So prior to taking a vote, I just asked that we table that for the next meeting.
Okay.
And if the office can communicate with him to make sure he's going to make it, it's great to volunteer for committees, but we're going to make sure that you're there.
That you're there, right, okay.
I'll make a motion that we table till the next meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Might be a nice spot to remind everybody on a board or commission that you require a 75% attendance rate.
I know a lot of people think it's fun and exciting to get on committees, and it's a do-good thing, but there are obligations and commitments and legalities that you tie yourself to by doing it. Not that we wanted to discourage anybody, but legally, a committee has to act with quorums and whatnot. They can't make a quorum, it really upsets the flow of government.
Right, yeah, so that's why there's a requirement, attendance requirement, so I'm going to reach out, okay. All right, so moving on to public comment period, is there anybody in the public that has anything that they would like to add?
Madam Chairwoman, if you look at your calendar, you'll see New Year's Eve falls on a Thursday. We don't have another meeting until New Year's Eve. What I'd like to do is to make a motion that the board authorize you to expand any liquor license hours that may come in in the meantime, so we don't handicap any liquor establishments that may want to stay open an extra hour. And I'd like to make that a motion. Perhaps in the future, we can make that part of our, our rules and regulations, so we don't bring it up every day.
Yeah, yeah, I think it should be in part of our, so if, maybe for our next meeting, we can have that amendment ready, so we'll have the amendment for the next meeting, but-
No, no, we're going to vote on it tonight.
No, no, we're going to vote on it, but what Selectman Lawrence is saying, it really should be added in our rules and responsibilities, or whatever we call that document.
Rules of order.
Rules of order, that's it.
And on that note, since we had had this, I had this conversation with one of the selectmen at a different time, for, there's been some discussion about what the title should be. So we, that's already included in the rules and regulations, maybe we do that at the same time.
The title of what? Oh, yes, yeah, but just, yes, doing away with the word "member."
Exactly. So maybe we just do it all at the same time.
Right.
So Dave, I know that probably comes under-
Yeah, we haven't voted on it yet. Okay, so we have a motion to, to allow the chairperson between now and New Year's to sign off on any extensions to the liquor licenses for New Year's Eve.
We got a motion?
Yeah, we have a motion, and it's been seconded. So moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then, in addition, for our next meeting, we'll have a, an update or an amendment to the rules of order.
Okay. Did you have something to add in the public comment?
Well, the other thing is, no, not on that, but I know that Dave and I have talked before, and that compact, are we going to get into that day with, or what is it? I got another letter from, from the Hill Planning Council, and the compact is on that again, so.
Yep.
Is that something we're going to venture into, or?
Yep, we've applied for, we're just waiting for the state to review, and then they will inform us as where we are. But yes, that has absolutely been applied for.
Okay, thank you.
So was there any kind of deadline? You know, I asked, I actually, I asked Administrator Gagni about that the other day. Is there any kind of like, was there any kind of like deadline? Was there any kind of indication of how much of a turnaround there was with that?
No.
I don't remember seeing anything on that.
Yeah, there was no deadline for application, and from what I've read, they actually, this is something that they really spent some due diligence on prior to accepting you into the program, but it didn't give a timeframe as to how long that due diligence period is.
Okay. Okay. All right, so hearing no other public comments, we're going to move on to the Town Administrator's report.
Wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
I'm going to do that at the end. I'll do that at the end. Yep.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. First is, is that you may and may not be aware, but we currently have a video on our website that refers to the town. Selectman Lawrence is currently on there doing an introduction. And the spirit of it is, is to allow businesses and residents to get a little bit of the flavor of the town by going onto the video, and use it as a marketing tool for anybody that would like to either do business or live in town. It's a couple of years old. As you know, we are updating our website, and we are in the process of doing that. So one of the goals is, is to be able to update and modernize our communication methods to all of our residents and businesses. So we are in the process of working with the vendor. Mallory has done extensive work, and she's done a really nice job on this with the vendor, that we will be filming a new video come springtime. It will be during the day, so I am more than welcome to do the opening remarks, unless one of the selectmen would like to. And also, what I want to do is, is that I want to make sure that we are not using stock footage. We are, they are actually going to be onsite. We also are going to reach out to Superintendent Oakley, and we are going to make sure that our brand-new school is also extremely highlighted in it as well. And also, we'll make sure that when traffic is flowing extremely well, we will highlight how well our center of town is. But with that said, I think this is an opportunity between a brand-new website, some new video capabilities, that we're going to be able to communicate all the really good, positive items about the town. And if we can do it right, the nice thing is, is that this becomes an outreach partner with our businesses, that they will be able to put a link banner on the website, so if somebody's on it, and for example, they see ABC Company, they can click on it, and will either go to their website, or go to a small video about them, which, again, this board being as business-friendly as it is, it's an attempt to continue that partnership with businesses, allow them to flourish, and hopefully attract more businesses. And just so you're aware, it is no cost to the town.
Good. Great, I like that, no cost to the town.
Well, and again, I do want to say thank you to Mallory. We've worked in concert with this, but she's carried a lot of the load working directly with the vendor, and again, she's done a nice job with it, and we'll, we'll continue doing a nice job with it during the filming as well.
Thank you, Mallory.
The Municipal Modernization Act, I have to tell you, as excited as we get about appointing new police officers and firefighters, and we certainly do do that, this here is one of the most enjoyable things I've actually ever placed on the agenda under my report, and here's why. This is a governor that, when he campaigned, said that he was going to be partnering with cities and towns, and do what he could on a local level to allow for better and stronger government. And he is absolutely living up to that promise. You may recall that over the last four months, that they had what they referred to as municipal listening sessions, where they asked town officials to be able to testify. You had, you requested four items that I testify on. Two of those items that this board requested made it into the bill. I think that's excellent. And the two items is that the governor agrees that we should not have to utilize newspapers in order to do all of our public hearings, and, and that for all of our procurement, because at the end of the day, with digital media, with our websites, and the fact that fewer and fewer people actually read the newspaper, it was a waste of time, energy, and money. So that's in the bill. However, just keep in mind, newspapers are not going to be happy. I'm sure they are going to lobby against it. But at least it's in the bill, so I think that's positive. The other is, is at the end of the year, we do transfers at town meeting. And being a smaller town, we're at a disadvantage, because we always have pockets of money and budgets that we can't always move unless we bring it to town meeting. So one of the items that was important to me as a financial officer, is giving us at a local level, meaning the selectmen level, in the FinCom level, the flexibility to be able to move money without having to go to town meeting at the end of the year. This money has already been appropriated, the tax rate has already been set, it's already in the budget, it's unspent, it's not an extra burden on the taxpayer, there's no additional taxes being raised. It's just a matter of moving the money from one budget that doesn't need it to a budget that does need it. So this gives us additional flexibilities, and just so you know, cities do it all the time. It's only towns that had to go and do it this way. So again, the governor listened. A whole bunch of other nice items that are in here, for example, every year, at budget time, we create an overlay account. And the issue with that is, is that if we draw down on that overlay account in one year, but we don't use it another year, the third year, we still have to raise more money, even though there's money in the prior-year overlay. Now we're going to be able to combine all of that money, so four years from now, we may not have to raise any money, because it'll all sit in one pool. Again, it's going to help the taxpayer, and allow the assessing department a lot more flexibility. And just to highlight a couple of other items, the town accountant is required by law to file what they refer to as a Schedule A. Basically, it's an unaudited report that the town accountant does on behalf of the town to the Department of Revenue by October 1st of every year. But that's a little bit onerous, because the school department has to get involved. Schools don't typically do a lot over the summers. September is a crunch for them, because you've got new kids coming in. So now they've actually delayed it till November 30th. Again, an excellent piece of legislation. And a whole host of other items as well. But I just wanted to, I put on here as an FYI to the board, it is 129 pages long. It's rather cumbersome to go through, but it is excellent piece of legislation for anybody. It doesn't matter if you're a Democrat or a Republican, at the end of the day, this just gives more flexibility at the local level, and I don't expect it'll go through 100%, because almost nothing ever does. But if it were to, this would really be a huge help to everything that we do.
Great.
Good news.
That's good, and thank you for taking the time to do the presentation, to get us, to get our initiatives, you know, at least brought forward, and it's exciting that two of them are on the, on the, on the bill.
It is, thank you.
So thank you.
The next one is, is that in reference to the proposed 40B over on Scotland Street, a handful of meetings ago, I asked the board to take a vote, and the vote, the board voted that they were not in, in favor of the 40B. As you know, a 40B being an affordable housing project is permitted through the Zoning Board of Appeals, but at the beginning of the project, Mass Housing looks for comments from the town. I have really spent a lot of time on this, because this, I think, although I think that everybody has property rights and has the ability to develop, I think this one here really is, to the board's vote, pretty detrimental to what the spirit and the characteristics of the town is, and quite frankly, it's just in the wrong spot, based on the amount of water that is usually up there. So with that said, it is seven pages long, because I went through every one of their waivers, and they have four pages of waiver requests, that quite frankly, I think is absurd and unfair. I'll talk about two of them, just to give you an indication. You recall that Mr. Hasham was here, and he talked about how this development would be environmentally friendly, in that it would seek out people that are of the vein to be more environmentally sensitive. And yet, one of the waiver requests was to not have to plant any trees. I think that's just absurd. The second one is, is that one of our basic rules and regulations to the planning board is to have five-foot sidewalks and 40-foot roads, and they're looking for four-foot sidewalks on one side of the street versus two, and 20-foot roads. 20-foot roads would barely allow two decent cars side by side to go through, never mind if you ever need to have an ambulance or a fire truck up there. Part of their presentation and their narrative talks about how this will be a family-friendly facility, where people will trick or treat, that you will have neighborhood block parties, that you will have cookouts, yada, 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 but oh, by the way, let's not have any sidewalks so people can walk from building to building. It's just, none of it makes any sense. The reality is, is that they are trying to build too much property on too little of a spot, and they recognize that, so they are looking to try to diminish, even on trees, because the problem with the tree, everybody thinks about the four-foot diameter, they don't ever think about the fact that there's a 30-foot root base. And that is why they don't want trees, because it would interfere with foundations. So I have put all of that in the letter, it has been sent to Mass Housing and accepted, it has been forwarded over to the ZBA. And the last item on that note is that there was a residential commit, there was a residential meeting last night with all of those residents from Scotland Street. It was at 7:00 at the Canoe Club. It was called from the developer. I can tell you, those residents are not very happy. They made it known that they were not very happy, and I wouldn't be surprised to see some local action on their part, in an attempt to try to prevent it as well.
If I can add on that, unfortunately, the Canoe Club Ballroom, being of good heart and community nature, donated the Canoe Club. They went in to book it for the hearing, and they donated it, thinking it was a town service that they were donating, so the, the gesture was great, but this is a developer that makes millions and millions of dollars if this program goes forward, and I, again, it's great that they, that they donated the facility for something that they thought was helping the town, but I think they were a little misled.
And the last thing on the agenda is in reference to, if you, I know you are aware that in this last summer, is that there was an open meeting law filed, complaint that was filed. We have received a response from the Attorney General's Office. The allegation made two, had two complaints. The Attorney General's Office found that the town was within its rights on one item, and there was no violation, and have found on the other item that it believed, it hits in her opinion, that there was a violation. I can tell you, after reading it, that I am strong disagreement with the decision. Town Council is in strong disagreement with the decision. We don't think that there was any violation that occurred. We feel that we were well within our rights, and you are well within your rights to negotiate with non-union personnel during contract negotiations and executive session. And unfortunately, the spirit of the decision is as follows. Is that if you have someone that sits in front of you, and you have not done a performance evaluation prior to, which 75% of cities and towns don't do, so this is a, this has ramifications throughout the entire state, and you say, the department head says, "I'd like a 3% raise," and one of you says, quote, "You know what? You do a great job, we'll give you a 3% raise." You have now just violated the open meeting law for saying you've done a nice job. That is not the spirit of- the open meeting law for saying you've done a nice job. That is not the spirit of the law. And I can tell you that the spirit of the law, which is actually one sentence, mentions nothing about the fact that performance evaluations or professional competency cannot be discussed. So after consulting town council, my recommendation, and his recommendation is, is that we should appeal this decision. That appeal process has a short window period. It's only 21 days, which means that the appeal has to be done by the end of the year. Legal counsel would obviously make the appeal. One thing I do want to let you know is that because of the nature of the appeal, and I'm not going to give away the strategy session because obviously we're an open session, but because of the nature of the appeal, it will not be a quick decision because it will be on a matter of law, which means that it will take a little bit of a longer period of time, and obviously, we would eventually expend some funds. I'm going to seek the assistance from MMA as well, because I think that other cities and towns have a vested interest in this. And just so you're aware, this interpretation of the Attorney General's Office, which is about 35 years old at this point, has zero case law, which means that there is nothing that they can cite where a superior judge or any other judge has actually cited in their favor. And on a side note, it used to be in the early 80s that you could not even negotiate an executive session for non-union contracts. The Attorney General had that view. It was argued in court. The lawyer in the town won against the Attorney General, and the name of that lawyer was David Gay, who is currently our town council. So he actually set the bar on this. He knows the inside and out, and that's why I feel pretty confident that his opinion is accurate. Now, anything can happen in an appeal. But what I would ask is, is that we actually vote to file an appeal, that at a later date over the next month or two, that in executive session, town council will lay over, lay out what our strategy would be, and then we will present a budget at that point. If at that point, for whatever reason, we're uncomfortable, you can always rescind the appeal. But you will have no ability to appeal it at a later date because this is your only opportunity. And on that last note, because obviously we're in limbo, I'm going to make a recommendation that at next meeting, we probably have a conversation about how we do performance evaluations and incorporate that process going forward.
Okay, so what I would say about that is, based on what you presented to us, and based on reading the, the violation that was in the packet, I would agree that we need to appeal it, you know, based on that information and based on our town council's advice. But then we still do have that, you know, how much is this going to cost conversation that we can do, you know, and we can rescind the appeal afterwards. So if, if it comes to, we weigh it out, and we say it's not worth it from a financial standpoint, then we still have the option to do that. So that would be my suggestion. And then the second part of that was the second part of what Administrator Gagnon said. So this makes clear to us that we need to make some decisions around how we're handling performance evaluations. I have reached out to my colleagues in, in, in different cities and towns, and the structure that they use for performance evaluations is not the structure that we're using. So I think we need to go in that direction, and I agree with you that I would, I would suggest that at our next meeting, we have a conversation around that.
Move to appeal.
I will second the motion, and I think on behalf of the entire board, we all know we weren't in violation, and that's why we, you know, we don't want to waste taxpayers' dollars appealing, but by all means, when we're right, we're right. And I, you know, want to thank David. I think he's done a lot to make sure that everything is transparent and everything's available on the, on the website. And I stand with the board 100% that we're in the right, and I'm happy to make a second.
Okay. So moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous.
As your second part of that was about the evaluations and the, and the day-to-day management. What I'd like to see is, the administrator will bring back some type of a plan for the future meeting, as you said, for a evaluation and management plan of the non-union department heads for discussion at a future meeting.
Got a motion?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Moved seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. That is my report.
Thank you. Do you guys have anything to add?
There is one thing. A while back, I had worked with David and coming up with a bylaw to propose for vacant buildings that are in disrepair, and I was one of them. Put that on the agenda for a future meeting, and we have a draft proposed bylaw that is a very rough draft, but this is to help preserve our town. We know that last bylaw failed. It was something I worked on for a couple of years, and it's been on the back burner. So I'd just like to put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Put it on the agenda for the next meeting. Yeah. Okay. All right, so this is the end of our last meeting before the holiday season. So on behalf of the Board of Directors, I mean, Board of Directors, I'm sorry, the Board of, forgot where I was. The Board of Selectmen in the town of West Bridgewater, we, we hope and wish everybody has a happy and safe holiday season. Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second.
Moved seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.